That brings us to item 5.01, the superintendent's FY23 operating budget proposal. Dr. Taylor?
We're going to turn on all of our electronics here.
Oh, I'm going to watch it over here. Yeah, I think it's going to go over there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Woo, we're getting intimate here for a second. I didn't know that was part of the plan. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity, Madam Chair, members of the board. And as you can see, we've got our fabulous student artwork showcased throughout our presentation today. And some of that digital art is very marketable in today's world. And a lot of what we hope to do for our kids is to prepare them for life after high school and life after whatever level they're in right now. And we are certainly very proud of our students as they make that journey. I thought I would start off by telling you the punchline right up front. I'm a fan of what we call a bottom line upfront or a bluff slide to tell you what the punchline of this budget is. And we have a lot of challenges in Stafford County Public Schools, and I have a handful of proposed solutions. Not a litany, not a list of 20 different proposed solutions, but really just a handful to target some really important details of some things that have been troubling us lately. And so you're going to see this theme throughout today's presentation as we focus on trying to find responsible solutions, given the amount of revenue that we have to work with. So I want to begin by talking a little bit about who we are as a school system. And I've got a litany of numbers here, and I'm not going to list them all off. But we are one of the largest school systems in Virginia. There are 132 school systems in Virginia, and about 100 of them are 2,000 or less students. And we are by far the largest in our region. And our students are served well in Stafford County Public Schools. And we're also a very diverse community. We have 86 spoken languages at home. We serve them in 33 very different schools at 35 different sites with different programs that we offer. We host a number of programs that are very competitive and that do help prepare our kids for their future. We also serve a lot of meals in our school system. We served 1.5 million lunches last year and 1.4 million breakfasts. We traveled 1.8 million miles in our transportation department this past year. We did so with 194 buses. You have staff of 4,250 individuals who wake up every morning wanting to serve kids. And I will say, as someone who's been new to this community, and this is my seventh week in your employ in Stafford County, I've learned a lot. We have fantastic people who live here. We have this great community that wants and cares very deeply for kids and wants to do the very best for kids. And the teachers that I get to go to work with every day and the staff that I get to go to work with every day feels the same way. It seems like a lot of money to have $341 million. And as a matter of fact, it's kind of like a mega millions type of dollar, like a Powerball kind of number. And to one individual, that is a lot. That is a lot. But to the 30,000 students that we serve and the 4,000 employees, it doesn't go very far. And I want to talk a little bit about what that looks like today during our presentation. We are so proud of our kids. We have been doing some pretty remarkable things with our kids, whether it's Operation Warm, where we're equipping the community with winter coats, or we're banding together for hunger with our marching bands and our schools working to do philanthropy in the community. We're pushing the cutting edge with cybersecurity technology. We are advancing our coursework where we can under very strange circumstances. This pandemic has not been kind to us, but our kids have found a way to excel. And our teachers continue to find a way to excel too. Our kids are picking up national, local, and state recognitions for their hard work. And it really is our goal, twofold, to get our kids ready for life after they leave us, but also to create those great neighbors that we want to have next door to us when they grow up. But some things have happened over the last few years, and I want to point that out. And there's always this big question when you talk about money, is whether or not the community is getting a great value for their tax dollar. And I can tell you that Stafford County gets a tremendously good value for what it spends on public education. But the question always arises is, do you share your warts or not? And tonight, I'm going to take a little bit of a risk, and I'm going to share some of our warts, because I want to be very transparent about the areas that we need to improve. And I want to be very clear about what I think it's going to take for us to get there. And so, right before the pandemic, we were performing pretty well. Not amazing, not at the top of the chart, but pretty well. I selected a handful of districts that I want to talk about. Stafford County, obviously, is a great example, right there at the top, and I've highlighted them in red. The state average of performance, and this is just SOLs, and SOLs aren't the end-all-be-all. I need to be very clear about that. It's just one indicator. But it's an important indicator for us because it gives us one snapshot of our performance. I chose Arlington because it's a school system that is the closest to us in size. It's a very different school system than ours, but it's very close to us in size. They have about 29,000 students. We have about 30,000 students. Fredericksburg City, obviously, is right around the corner. Hanover County is a school system very similar to ours in terms of its geographic diversity, in terms of its student population. It's a good match. Prince William is right around the corner. And Spotsylvania County is also a good example. And I could have probably put in Falkir County too, if I wanted to. So, taking a look at performance, you know, we were doing okay. Not great, but we were right around the state average. Where we were several years before this was actually much higher. But where we are today is pretty dramatic. And it's important that we confront this face-to-face. And I want to put this out there that, of course, we didn't assess history and social studies. SOL is the same way, and that content the same way that we did prior to the pandemic. But performance has changed. It's changed quite a bit. And although lots of other places throughout the state also had similar performance drops, some didn't. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out that Hanover County was in-person for pretty much the entire time. And Arlington County was virtual for pretty much the entire time. So there are some interesting things there, that there wasn't a yo-yo effect of going this and that and back and forth and hybrid and not hybrid. And that certainly has paid, played a toll on Stafford County and many other counties. But it's up to us to look at how we can reverse this trend and how we can focus on our kids and give them not only the academic supports that they need, but also the social and emotional support that they need to be successful in our schools. There's also a little bit of a correlation between performance and money. Now, I wouldn't be doing a budget presentation if I didn't make this at least a little bit about money. And Arlington, as you can see, is right up top, and they definitely spend a lot per kid. And I'm not necessarily advocating that for Stafford County. I don't think that's a good fit for us, just to be honest. I think we could utilize our resources a whole lot better than that. But every other county compared to us just buries us. And just even small differences have a tremendous effect on our bottom line. So that you can see the actual numbers, I thought I'd point it out to you. And there's some steep realities with this. And to spell that out even a little bit clearer, if Stafford spent the same amount on public education as Spotsylvania County, we'd have an additional 21 million to use for our classrooms. If we spent the same amount as Prince William per student, we'd have nearly 45 million. If we spent the same amount as Falkir, we'd be closer to 82 million. Now, again, I'm not necessarily advocating for this, but in Arlington, it would be close to 300 million, which would be close to doubling our budget. Now, the funny thing about Arlington is they're the closest to us in size in the Commonwealth. And they have nearly twice the amount of money to support kids. Now, money isn't everything. And it certainly isn't the kind of budget that we're looking for and the kind of money that we're hoping to spend, not even close. I'd never make that proposition to you or to the taxpayers. But it is important for us to point out how different each of these school systems spends money and where they choose to focus and how they choose to support kids, and also what kind of performance they get in exchange. It's called return on investment. And so I also think it's important for us to talk about this wart. And that wart is that we're growing pretty quickly. And if we were to look even a few more years into the future, I know that this board would not be surprised that that bar on the right's just going to keep on going up. The reason I chose 12 years and this being the 13th year on the far right is that our kids that are entering kindergarten in the 2010, 2011 school year will be graduating next year. And my, how their school system has changed in the 13 years that they have been in Stafford County. They have added another 4,000 classmates. It's pretty dramatic. And I wonder what our entering kindergarteners next year, how much Stafford County will change during their time as well. 2010 is an interesting year for another reason, too. It's also the first fiscal year where we had a dramatic impact tied to the housing market crash. And we're going to talk about that again in a few more slides, but we haven't quite recovered from that one yet. So I want to talk a little bit about some of our needs, but I want to do it in a little bit of a roundabout way, so please indulge me. Again, we see a lot of our needs tied to recruiting and retaining great people, managing our growth, and of course, on-time transportation. I want to spend some time talking about that. But the bottom line is that our families, our students, our community not only deserves a high-quality school system, but they demand it. I think I got a few friends here today that would agree with me. Now, I know I'm going to get some flack for this. So in fairness, in fairness, my wife is from Maine, and her first professional football game was the first game that Tom Brady played in as a professional athlete. So in fairness, this is a little bit to her, but it proves a point. Tom Brady makes about $45 million a year, and per pass, he makes over $62,000 per pass. And a first-year teacher in Stafford County makes $48,000 a year. Now, that's just not a commentary on Tom Brady. Or, and notice I did put him in a Patriots uniform too, and I can't get used to the new scenario at all. But it's a commentary on some of the things that we value. And it's really important that we start to look at our teachers with a different value lens and take a look at what it takes for them to survive and for them to be a part of our community and to make a dramatic impact in this community. So you would have to work for 20 years in Stafford County to even get close to what Tom Brady makes per pass. 20-year teacher in Stafford County, $61,950 in salary. And the funny part about that is, is that's Tom Brady's salary per pass, not per completion. His completion rate is only 67.5%. And I don't know about you, but I don't know if I'd be thrilled with 67.5% SOL scores like Tom Brady gets. But that's pretty tough. And so, looking at our teachers through a different lens, I think, is going to be pretty important because teacher quality is the biggest differentiator in our school system. It is the single most important factor to school improvement. You can have great everything else. If you don't have a great teacher in the classroom, you're not going to get the performance that you want. And so, we've been losing teachers at a pretty alarming rate. Now, I would make a pretty strong assertion that having some attrition is a good thing. Bringing in new ideas, welcoming in new people to the organization, that's really important. But we've been losing at a rate a little bit higher than what we should expect. And a good target for us would be somewhere in the neighborhood of around 10 or 11%. Last year, our attrition was 18.2%. And several years before that, it was pretty high too. So you can't necessarily blame the pandemic, although I'm sure that that had a role. And of that 18.2%, less than 20% of that was due to retirement. So 80% of the 18.2% was through attrition in the ranks, not retirements. Matter of fact, I think our retirement rate of that percentage was 16.7%. Substitute teachers are another big issue for us to deal with. Before the pandemic, we had a substitute fill rate of 93%. During the school year, it slipped to 83%. In real terms, what that looks like is it means that between 30 and 40 classes in our school system go unfilled, and teachers have to give up their planning periods, and other support staff have to give up their time to fill those classes. And if you're doing some quick math, my second slide in this presentation had to do with the number of schools we have and the number of campuses we have. And we have 35 campuses. So that's effectively one teacher per school per day that goes unfilled. Routinely, Friday is the highest number of requests for subs and the lowest fill rates. We're going to talk specifically about Friday when we get to our solutions. Our support staff play a critical role in helping to keep our school system going. You're going to see a pretty significant target to address some of the needs of our bus drivers, our outstanding, very hard-working and understaffed nutrition team, and our school nurses who really have been working double, triple, quadruple time over the last few years. We're very proud of them, but they are who make school possible behind the scenes. It's also a really important note that 70% of our employees are residents of Stafford County. They pay taxes here. They shop here. They're not just employees that are taking the tax dollar. They're also providing the tax dollar. And that is really, really important. We also have real issues that we're not going to go into a ton of detail about tonight, like our growing community in terms of our capital needs. We're going to talk about it in other aspects. Some of our aging buildings and the needs that happen when you have massive systems that go under, like HVAC systems, roofs, air filtration systems that need massive upgrades, and of course, our transportation system, which definitely needs change. So, I'm proposing for the board a number of things for consideration. And I've reorganized a few things for you tonight, and I want to share them with you. I have a few handouts for you. And for our viewing public, these are attached onto the board's agenda. For our audience that's in the room, we do have some paper copies if you'd like it. We have last year's budget summary. We have this year's budget summary formatted the same way. And then I did something completely different. I formatted it the way I like it. Sorry about that. And I formatted a budget summary that looks like this, that has your revenue, something called nondiscretionary expenditures, which I'm going to talk about, and then our discretionary expenditures, and then inside, a list of enhancements that could make our school system better. The last handout that I have for you is all of that in a really tight summary form. And I'll close with that handout to talk about. So let's get into what our revenue looks like. Well, the good news is that it's good news and that we are expecting, due to a significant bump in state revenue, that we are going to expect close to $20 million, a little over $20 million at this time in our projected basic aid. And thanks to our citizens in this community that have spent their tax dollars locally, we can expect close to $4 million in local tax revenue from purchases in terms of sales tax revenue. Our county government has programmed preliminarily $8 million as a placeholder in their local budget. So that will be a county transfer. And this is all new money in addition to what our budget was funded in the previous year. And that's what our revenue picture looks like. Just so that you have a kind of a glimpse of like where our money comes from, it's about 1% comes from the federal government. About 1%, actually, a little share just right above 1% comes from local fees that we collect or small things that we might have in terms of a building rental or something along those lines, very small amount of money. But 38% comes from our local county government. It's a transfer from the local government, and 60% of our budget comes from the state. It's good to know, just to kind of put in perspective. And how we spend our money is really, really simple. And maybe this is oversimplifying it, but I'm going to make it really simple. We spend 86% of our budget on compensation and benefits. This is about the people that serve our kids. That's how we spend our money. The other portion, the other 14%, is how we keep the lights on and how we maintain our buildings and the materials and supplies that our teachers have. That's that red pie slice. And that may be an oversimplified version, but it's a good indicator of what our school system looks like. Most school systems are somewhere in the 75-ish range in terms of compensation and benefits. And they focus a little bit more on some of the stuff. We don't have a lot of money to have a lot of stuff. All of our money goes to putting a sharp teacher in the classroom and supports around that teacher so that they can do a great job. So our first big chunk that I want to focus on is our nondiscretionary expense. And these are quite literally what it would take for us to do exactly what we did this year, again next year, but with 600 more students. And it would cost us about $12 million to do just exactly what we did last year, again next year, but with 600 more students. And what some of that looks like, and I'm not going to go line by line with this because you have a budget work session to talk through that. But new positions for growth. You're welcoming over 600 students next year, brand-new. So our student count won't be 30,000. It'll be 30,600 plus. And you will need additional personnel to support that. And so that's about 60 positions that support 600 students. That's everything from bus drivers to special education teachers to general ed classroom teachers. It's the whole gamut, okay? We also want to accommodate for new kids coming into school, and we do a per-pupil allocation to the schools so that they can have some funds for materials and supplies. That's factored in at just over a quarter of a million dollars. And then we have some contractual requirements that we hope to maintain year over year that the board has started before. A good example of that is that earlier this year in August, the board increased bus driver compensation and set a new bus driver starting salary. And in order to keep that going at its current rate, will cost 1.45 million, just to continue the things that you've already done. This board has done something miraculous that not a lot of people have ever really considered in public education. And it's really a bold thing and something you should be very proud of, which is that when there's a healthcare increase, you don't let it affect your employees on their bottom line. You take the cost and the employer's share of healthcare expense. So when you give a raise to your employees, they actually get to feel the raise, and they don't have the adverse consequence of constantly raising healthcare costs. It's a bold move. And it's also something that has a big impact. But it is also a big expense. In order to maintain these things over time, it does have a cost. There's something that I'm putting in the budget as a placeholder for future years. And I apologize that in my seventh week on the job, I haven't had a chance to unpack this as much as I'd like to. But the second-to-last bullet at the bottom is something called pay-go-major maintenance. Pay-as-you-go-major maintenance. We have been debt financing a lot of our major maintenance projects through our capital improvement plan. That has to stop. And we need to move forward to a place where it's something that we build into our operating budget over time. And so this is something that we should invest in by making contributions over the next several years to build up a fund where we can start dealing with some of our major maintenance issues without debt financing. This is a really smart way to handle major maintenance and a really sharp way to move our division forward so that we're not having to worry about some of those big systems going down and, oh my gosh, where are we going to find the money? Because we will have built up a fund to help support that over time and be able to manage that. If you're looking for a target of what that would look like, it's pretty expensive. People who budget properly for major maintenance should budget somewhere in the neighborhood of 2.5% of the value of all of their assets. Well, the value of all of your assets is over $700 million. So if you're doing the quick calculations in your head, that's about $20 million a year, about $18 or $19 million a year that we should be budgeting for major maintenance. We're not doing it. So we need to take a hard look at what that might look like so that we can take care of these community treasures. Because our schools are community treasures. They're hubs for the community. And just to continue to keep the lights on, the utility companies are raising their rates over 6%. And so we have an anticipated increase in our utility bill. So it's a lot. So just to keep the lights on next year, in a sense, it will cost us an additional $12 million. The last category that I want to spend a lot of time on is our discretionary category. And this is really just the area where we have a lot of say in what we spend our money on. And I want to target really just a handful of areas. I want to target our licensed teacher compensation, and that's everybody from counselors to teachers to the folks that are working directly with our kids. And as well as our non-licensed scale and increased compensation there. I'm looking at a flat 5% increase for our non-licensed scale. And our teacher scale, I'm going to get into great detail with that momentarily. I want to target substitute compensation in a pretty dramatic way. If you've ever taken an Uber on one day and the rate was a pretty low rate, and then you took the same Uber ride several days later at a peak time, you probably paid a premium price. Well, we should look at premium pricing for some of our subs on high-impact days. And so with that, we have a strategy to address our Fridays and target Fridays as a way to help increase our substitute pool and our substitute fill rate. The last bucket that I want to focus on is transportation improvements. And I think it's time that we have a school day that is long enough to accommodate a catch-up to learning that needs to occur and to replace some of the learning that never occurred or that was lost. And we're going to need some time to do that. So in order to do that, we will need to return to a three-tiered bus schedule. And that three-tiered bus schedule is part of a transportation recommendation that this board will receive at its February meeting. I will announce this again during superintendent's comments, but I'll be surveying our parents, our secondary students, and our staff as to their perceptions about the transportation schedule, their bell schedule, and the order in which schools go. And that survey will be released tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM. Going to more detail about that soon. I think it's really important that we figure out a way that we can be as competitive as we can in a very competitive market during a national teacher shortage and during troubling times that we're facing right now. That top line you see is Prince William County's salary scale. The red line is Stafford County's salary scale, and the very light blue line is Spotsylvania County's salary scale. Now, it doesn't seem very dramatic because those lines look awfully close together, but the dotted line is a new salary structure that I'm proposing for our licensed scale. This, like I said, is teachers, counselors, and instructional staff. And it is actually pretty dramatic. And I'm going to drag you back to Algebra I for a second. And I'm going to talk about slope. And I'm gonna talk about slope. Because our salary scale is an issue of slope. The Prince William salary scale slopes at 3% per year after the first several years. So after the first five years, which is relatively no change, it starts to increase dramatically at a rate of 3.5%. Ours during the first 15 years hardly has any slope at all. And this is what's pretty dramatic. So what I'm proposing to the board is to have the first five years slope at 3% to be price-competitive with Prince William, and then every year thereafter, slope at 1.5% to give teachers hope as to what the future could be and what their potential salary could be in the future if we maintain a system like this. The board can then in the future look at how it wants to start its starting teacher salary and what slope it wants for its wages looking forward based on the available revenue that it has for this particular initiative. So let's take a little bit of a closer look. When we look at our current scale against our proposed scale, you'll see that it's very close together at the bottom, not quite close together at the top, but very far apart in the middle. And it's this middle portion that has been really troubling because, and I've used this analogy before, and I think that it's relevant today. When we were going through school, our teachers were in their late 30s on, on average in terms of age. They were our parents' age. But today, our teachers are much, much younger, almost a decade younger on the average. And that's a reflection because of all of the people leaving the profession. They're not staying. And our attrition rate reflects this, and it's pretty dramatic. Our early teachers aren't staying, our mid-career teachers aren't staying. A few of our folks that are late career are staying to the end. But we do need to incentivize our great staff to stay. I think all of our community would agree that they've had pretty miraculous experiences with some really great teachers in our school system. The trick is, we gotta keep them. And we've gotta recruit new friends to join the team. And we have to incentivize that. So it's pretty dramatic to make the jump that I'm proposing in the middle. But I also think that it's necessary, given where we are and what we need to do to reverse attrition. So I'm offering a corrected and more competitive teacher pay scale or instructionally licensed scale. The last section is the, the guts, as you say, of this document that you have before you. And it's a long list of enhancements that didn't make the budget. It's a very extensive list, as a matter of fact. And these are things that we should start thinking about as a school district over the next several years. And this list really is exhaustive. I really could have put together 20 slides just on this list of all of the wonderful, great ideas that our staff came up with for budget requests. But what it will cost us is, is significant. So we have to map it out over time. I promised you responsible solutions. And the most responsible solution that I can offer you is to not eat the apple in one bite. It's that we have to eat it over time and we have to plan ahead and we have to do this year over year to think about the future, not at one time, but thinking about it in iterative terms. So my hope is that once we get past this fiscal year, that this is the last year that I present to you a one-year budget. And that's pretty dramatic. I'm also hoping to bring to you staffing standards that we can fulfill, that are true and honest from school to school to school, that there's consistency and parity between schools, that we account for the differences in our schools and what they need, and that we stick to it. That we start biting off some of these enhancement apples one bite at a time. And it's not the appropriate time because the board has a schedule for when it talks about its capital improvement plan, but rethinking how we might better serve our community and manage its growth with its capital improvement plan. And it's gonna take us several months to assess where we need to go going into the fall, which is when the board adopts its capital improvement plan. Speaking of the, of the fall, the board set forward three objectives in its budget priorities directing the superintendent. Now, I wasn't here when you all adopted those priorities, but I gotta tell you, you picked three good ones. You said that the superintendent needed to address staff compensation, retention, and recruitment. You said that the superintendent in his proposed budget needed to address managing growth. And we've done that. And the superintendent needed to also take a hard look at per pupil expenditure. And we've done that. So I'm very pleased to bring you this budget presentation and to bring you responsible solutions on how we might recruit and retain great people, how we might manage our growth, and how we might provide on-time transportation through a three-tiered bus system. So I have just this last handout I wanna talk to you about. And I've detailed some of the changes in, inside the handout on the upper-left corner. And I will say this, it's got a very attractive cover. Very nice, thank you. It's too bad our student left because she got highlighted very nicely. It's delightful cover. But I wanna show you what this looks like in actual numbers on a teacher pay scale. So I have our current pay scale and I have our proposed pay scale side by side. And I picked a year very specifically, I picked year 14. And this is a teacher with 14 years of experience this year that at the end of it will have 15 years of experience and will be on the scale at step 15 for next year. And the reason I picked this is because this teacher, who would have started 14 years ago with us, started right before the housing bubble burst. And instead of getting step adjustments every year, they got percentage adjustments every year. And what happened to this teacher is that several things happened to this teacher. This teacher's salary got compressed. And in addition to changes in the housing market and changes in the revenue picture locally, this was also the year that the Affordable Care Act was passed and healthcare costs skyrocketed. So not only did our teachers experience compression in their salary, but their take-home pay became less. And over time, despite lots of great efforts from lots of great folks trying to reverse this, there hasn't been enough revenue, really until now, to take a step at how we might reverse some of that course and how we might create some wage growth and repair some of that. So it looks pretty dramatic for that person. And it is, because they've been through a lot. And the state right now is offering an incentive right now in the, in the current state's plan of a shared expense of 5% or more for teacher increase. It's funny when governors say that they're going to increase teacher pay by 5%. What they never, never really tell anybody is that they are willing to pay a portion of 5%, not the whole 5%, which is always interesting. So we're starting our, our scale with a 5% change. And then we're going to fix that slope. And we're going to correct that scale and set a marker for how we might improve that going forward. And on the back page, I do have a little bit of contact information, which I think is helpful. Folks who think that this is a good idea, they may wanna reach out. Or folks who think this is a bad idea may wanna reach out, too, and share with their policymakers things that are important to them. This is by no means an exhaustive list of all of the things that we could or would want to do to make our school system better. But this is a really important list. And I narrowed it down to three really top priorities. And that's where my focus is. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll stop talking and I'll entertain any questions that the board may have, knowing full well that the board has several work sessions coming up on this topic.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.